We call the November eighteenth, twenty twenty four, Goshen Board of Education meeting to order at six thirty P M. Mr. Shinko, can you please call the roll?
Mr. West.
President.
Here.
Pat Rocke.
Here.
Mr. Rare.
Here.
This is Gray.
Here. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda of tonight's board meeting?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Shinko, can you please call the roll?
Mr. West. Yes. Warrenkey?
Yes.
Pat Rocke?
Yes.
Mr. Rare?
Yes.
This is Gray.
Yes. I'd like to call for a moment of silence and ask for safety over our school district. Thank you. Please stand as Marco Principal, lead students, and lead this pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We are so very excited to have so many people here at our committee tonight. We always love to showcase our wonderful staff and students, and they are really the star of this. So I'm not going to speak a whole lot because they are so very excited to share their information today. But we are going to talk a little bit about our brand new special, if you can hit that next to me, called STEAM Studio. And I want to give those to you guys right there. This coming around here for the board members is the paper that went out to our parents at Open House for our brand new STEAM studio. It's for science, technology, engineering, art, and math concepts and skills. And it's a brand new special. There's a forty minute special taught by Mrs. Caitlin Henderson, who really is a great fit for this position. She came to us from our first grade classroom, and I kind of looped her into this and said, I think you would be really great at this, and let's talk about what this is going to look like. And so students really practice a lot of problem solving and social skills and emotional free choice center play focused on all of these curricular things. And she does a lot of guiding and supporting. And I would just really love for anybody that wants to come and see this in action, please do so. Because the room itself is absolutely wonderful. The pictures that she has on the slideshow do not do it justice. And it was modeled after another STEAM program that we saw at Indian Hill Primary last year when I went for my high A's elementary principal internship programs. And so I want to read to you a little bit about this, and then I want to turn it over to Mrs. Henderson so that she can talk to you about how she set this up. And the students are going to talk about what their favorite part of STEAM is and why they love it because it is a very popular special. But we have been very excited to have this addition. It's a groundbreaking unified arts class. We've never had anything like this. And the catalyst really for this for us was due to an increase in the need for all of our students to really engage in a lot of open ended, interest led play so that they can learn important skills that they weren't learning in the classroom. But now, since they have a forty minute block special time, they are really getting a lot of these problem solving skills with Mrs. Henderson. So they practice things like decision making, problem solving, working with their peers, social emotional learning, and flexible thinking through all of these centers that are there on science, technology, engineering, art, and math, which get interchanged with the kids' input, which is awesome. And they do a lot of this collaborative thinking together for this particular special. So all of our students in grades K one and two visit this studio as a part of their regular specials rotation. In these very focused lessons that she's going to talk about here are guided by Mrs. Henderson, and allows a lot of the students to engage in this open ended play. They get to use a lot of different types of media, which she'll show you in some of her slides. They get to practice and grow important skills along with her guidance and support. It's really interesting because when you walk into the classroom, she'll have ten minutes where she's got the kids on the carpet or maybe less than that, depending on the group of kids. And then they get the free choice to go into whatever center they want to go to with their own time allotments. Like she doesn't tell them, you have to play here, you have to play there, you've got to play with two people. They get that opportunity to figure out how to play with their peers, but also engage in the things like Legos and blocks and the technology piece and engineering where they're doing a makerspace. I'm probably stealing some of your time. She's going to talk all about this. It's really, really cool stuff. So I just want to talk a little bit about her because she was a great fit for this. As a former first grade teacher, last year I looked at her and observed her and looked at her classroom, and I was like, man, she's doing some really great stuff with problem solving and critical thinking. And I thought, this is a natural fit for her. She does a lot of PVIS, our positive behavior intervention supports with kids. And I thought, this would be an absolutely wonderful medium for her to teach this for the kids. So she's our lead person, and she's been teaching for four years, three of those here in Goshen. She graduated from Wilmington College with a bachelor's degree in early childhood education, and she has a minor in art, which is great because that's part of the STEAM, right? Art. She attended Bowling Green State University for her fourth and fifth grade endorsement and Western Gardeners University for her master's degree in curriculum design instruction. She has been very, very passionate about making sure the students have social skills and that their behaviors that they need in order to succeed, which is the reason she was chosen to take on this groundbreaking special. Her classroom is a perfect place for students to learn about cooperating with one another and honing those social skills that are very, very important here at K one and two to learn about this in later grades as well as life in school while building important concepts that all revolve around this STEAM, science, technology, engineering, art, and math. So we're super excited about this special and all the possibilities it brings because it helps students in those first and early learning pieces and then later on, thinking about possible careers because they do talk about that with some of those social skills areas. So without further ado, I'm going to bring up Mrs. Henderson. Let's give her a round of applause. Oops, sorry.
But I'm not very, I don't keep up.
Thank you. Those were very kind words. I am Mrs. Henderson, teach STEAM at Mar Cook Elementary. And I just want to say that this has been a really great opportunity for me as well. And I have absolutely loved being able to curate this for my kids and teach those social skills and really, I think, make an impact even though we've only been doing this for a few short months. So I wanted to start with introducing my procedures, how I did that. We spent four to six weeks on basically just how to play and how to be in STEAM studio. I showed students pictures of things in the classrooms that they knew exactly where things were, where things went when they cleaned up, what it should look like when they leave. And we discussed everything at length to just kind of know what they're supposed to do. I also follow the same structure for every class period. So we have a lesson or we talk about what's new, whatever it is that day that we need to do. Then they have time to play, and then we do a cleanup time, and then they have about five minutes to reflect. And if we have time at the end of the class, I always try to have time, but you know how that goes. They get to share about their play, so what they did and what they learned and how they did it and who they played with. So it's a really cool experience for them to be able to do that. I want to go through some of our stations that we have. So I have current stations in here and pictures of those. And then I also have like possible future ones that I want to try and implement. So I want to start with our science centers. Right now, we have the sensory bin, and we have Pumpkin Jack project that we're doing. The sensory bin has been really cool to see them just kind of experience different mediums and different things that they can play with, and their imaginations really run wild with it. We had, it's called Cluffle, and it kind of moves and does its own thing. And the kids, it was like a pizza dough, and it was a construction site. So it was really cool to see their imaginations run with that. Our Pumpkin Jack project, it's a book, and they take the pumpkin out into the garden, and it decomposes, and there were seeds left over, so then it ends up sprouting new pumpkin plants. So we have a pumpkin rotting in a bucket behind the school. And we're hoping for little pumpkin plants at the end of the school year. So possible future ones that I would love to try and do, some science experiments in an independent way somehow. Mining buckets, co-si resources on the technology center, and growing plants, tadpoles, butterflies, anything that Shelly will let me bring into the school. I would love to do chickens at some point if we can get that. For the technology piece, we have our computer center. Right now, it's a typing game that they can do. I've also had like virtual field trips, so like a scientist museum, things like that. And we have an overhead projector, which has been really cool to see kids kind of interact with that old technology and like, what is this, and why do we use it? You know what I mean? So they've enjoyed that. Something I would like to do is new and old technology like next to each other. That would be cool for them to see. And possibly age appropriate coding or robotic exploration, if we can figure something out like that. For our engineering centers, I have cardboard building, the tinker space activities, roadway building for toy cars, and a Lego table. So the tinker space has a lot of different blocks and building materials and things that they can kind of explore with and experiment. For possible future centers, I would love to try fort building in some capacity. I don't know exactly what that would look like yet, but, and then designing houses or buildings and stuff like that. For our art centers, we have our makerspace, which is composed of coloring and cutting and gluing materials and kind of loose ends and parts and pieces that they can use. So tissue, paper, cardboard, anything really that they can create with. And we actually just learned about that this week. So they've really enjoyed being able to explore that. We have a painting table as well, and they've already explored with a lot of different kinds of paints. We have our Halloween jack-o'-lantern and creepy carrot making for Halloween. They had a lot of fun with that. And then, of course, we have the dramatic play area. I've had a kitchen in there, and we now have a grocery store, which the kids have absolutely loved being able to use. Possible future centers, I want to just keep up with the ink crafts and different activities that way. Right now, we actually have canned turkeys that we're doing for Thanksgiving and a disguise the turkey. So they have magnetic pieces that change the way the turkey looks so he doesn't get eaten for Thanksgiving. For our math centers, we have tangrams, and I have a measuring center. It's been really cool to see the kids explore with the yardsticks and the rulers. They really enjoyed trying that out. Possible future centers, I would love to have a sorting and grouping centers to practice skip counting and things like that. And money and geometry. We've also had money and leave grocery store. So it's been really cool to see them, you know, start to count the money and, you know, it costs this much. So they figure out how to give the bills to them. It's really cool to see them explore that. So on top of all the STEAM things, we've also had a lot of social emotional things that we've been learning. So we talked about how to join a group, how to solve problems, talked about how to be creative. We've talked about how to be respectful, responsible, and safe. We've talked about how to be a good human, just really basic things that these kids really need to learn at this young age. I use a lot of books to teach these social emotional things. I've also been able to use books to teach about really serious topics like nine eleven. I was also able to use the book Pumpkin Jack to teach about science experiments, and that led us to what we're doing now with our Pumpkin Jack. So our literary connections have been really cool, and I know the kids enjoy the books. I think last month sometime, I sent out a Google form for parents to fill out just some feedback about the STEAM studio. So the first question I asked was, is there anything that your student has told you that they enjoy about STEAM? As you can see, there was a lot of positive things. I won't read everything, but kids, you know, a lot of parents said that their kids loved every part. A lot of parents said that they liked the Lego table the best, the light table, and the dramatic play area. So the kitchen or the grocery store area are my favorites. So another question I asked, was there anything else that you want me to know? And so again, a lot of positives were in this. And it was a lot of things like, this really fits what our kids need, or I feel like it really benefits my child. I had a lot of parents say that it was a great addition to Mar Cook, and that was their favorite special. So that was exciting. I wanted to wrap up with our snowplow that we got to do for the light of Goshen Parade. So all grade levels got to work on this. Our second grade did the front of it, and then kindergarten and first grade did their handprints on the back of it. So, and they really enjoyed being able to do that. So I would like to invite some of my friends up here. You guys want to come on up? Sophia and Michaela, Legacy, Connor. No paper, so I turn around and see if you can see everybody. All right. All right, Connor, do you want to go first? Or Legacy, do you want to go first? Legacy, you think you can first?
No.
You want to go first, anybody? All right, Michaela, you go first. So Michaela, I want you to tell them what your favorite part about STEAM is and why.
My favorite part about STEAM is listening to books because they might ruin the rest of the conversation.
Very good. Chase, you want to go next?
I like to paint the blocks.
You like the rock paintings, do you? Why is that your favorite, Chase?
Because we get, uh, think of what we want to do, and then we get to paint it.
My favorite part about STEAM is the light table.
Why is that your favorite?
Because we get to make different creations with the different shapes and different pieces.
Ready for me?
My favorite bit is the store.
Why is that your favorite?
Because there's like a little cart.
My favorite part of STEAM is the makerspace because I love to color.
Legacy, what's your favorite?
My favorite part is the damn area because you can make cool stuff with it.
Awesome. Thanks for sharing, guys.
Wrap it up, or I can't. Well, I do want you to stay up.
Okay.
Bring the kiddos up here for a minute. We'll probably help one by one. So when I call you up, you're going to get a certificate, and you're going to get a G pin because we give G pins out for kids that go above and beyond and do extra. And you guys coming here tonight, first and second grade kindergarten and talking to a big group, it's awesome. So you're going to get that. I do want to say, just, you know, as we go through this, kicking this off because it's something new, and as you can see, she's got all kinds of ideas moving forward. I think kids probably don't even know they're learning when they walk in a room, is the best part. Talk about all the math pieces, having kids count money and explore. And this world is all about collaboration and making sure that we can work well with each other. And we're doing that at kindergarten and first grade in all of our classrooms. But to have forty minutes to dedicate to it for my science, technology, engineering, art, and math, not a lot of schools get to do it. So, you know, I thank the board for letting us take that leap. So, you know, I thank the board for letting us take that leap at Mark Cook and adding that in. So we're going to call you up and when you come up, you got one more thing to do. You have to say who you brought with you today. Can everybody do that? All right, so we're going to go with Henry first. Where's Henry at? Who'd you bring with you? Your mom and dad? Good job, thanks, mom and dad. Who'd you bring with you? Who'd you bring with you? And your brother, your good brother? Who'd you bring with you? Loud and proud. Who'd you bring with you?
My mom and my dad and my sister and my grandma.
Legacy, come on down, buddy. Who'd you bring with you?
Mom and dad.
Thank you guys for coming. All right, last but not least. Who'd you bring with you? That's right.
I brought my husband Nathan and my homeboy.
The board's up here.
I just want to say incredible job, especially by our little ones. And Mrs. Henderson, you did an amazing job too. We all just got back from a support conference and I actually talked to COSI. So there's lots of resources there and I got a card, so maybe we can connect. But I think you guys all did a wonderful job. Super excited to get this experience. I know I talked to some of you out in the hall and you were really nervous, but great job standing up there and talking in front of everyone. Does anybody else have anything?
It's good.
Oh, and we can come to your classrooms sometime?
So you're...
Yes.
Is that an option?
Yes.
Oh, you say yes?
I miss you and I'm like, ooh.
So you guys are all welcome to stay for the entire board meeting. But if you would not like to, you're also welcome to head out at this time. It's up to you.
We're going to head out. Not really like this class. So thank you guys for all the support.
Thank you, everybody.
Well, it's a little more important than blah, 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 but it will be, it probably will sound like that to you. It'll sound a little bit like Charlie Brown's teacher, I think.
Thank you.
We'll come to you.
Favorite guys, yeah, see you guys.
Mrs. Scherzinger, do we have anyone signed up for public participation?
At least I got one of these processes.
Oh.
If I'm public, I got one piece, yeah.
Sorry, sorry. I skipped ahead. So old business, an update on RFQ process, Mr. Bailey.
So just reminder where we're at as we discussed as a board. We really want to get community input for our next steps of our facilities. And part of that is the RFQ that we put out so that we can engage the community, look at our current facilities with that process, let them weigh in on us with, you know, what their thoughts are on current facilities from the space we have to the utilization of the space. Are we doing all that all right? And then develop some higher level plans for each school. Identify some long range planning and develop a financial projection for how to bring all of that to life. Again, in the end, the hope is that this is a community. Comes from the community on what next steps we want to take. Just where we're at in the process, if you guys, reminder, we put out the RFQ on October 15th. It was due last Friday, or the 8th, was that last Friday? Two Fridays ago, maybe. We will be interviewing five firms on Wednesday and Thursday. So we could have five very highly respectable firms put in for it that will be interviewing. And then with a target date to bring you guys a resolution to proceed to negotiate with the top firm. So really just a reminder, as we interview, we will be scoring on a rubric based on responses that we ask them to provide criteria on. So they provided a bunch of criteria and we'll do probably about a 30 minute presentation for us. And then we'll have about 30 minutes to interview based on their, on their presentation. With that said, the committee, as myself, Mr. Schenkel, Mrs. Scherzinger, Mr. Dubs, Mr. Smith, Bill and Melissa, and then Dan Tarkington, who is our Four Seasons consultant that's done a lot with us from an energy conservation standpoint, and put all the bells and whistles in the building for that. Again, when we're done, we'll rank the top three, but we'll negotiate a contract with the top candidate. So I will, you know, be bringing that to you guys next month for some discussion. And with that being said, if we, you know, if we don't reach consensus with our top, the next step would be to go to the second, but I really hope not to get to that point. So questions on that from your guys' standpoint? Just making sure we're all on the same page of the process we're going through, the why? And then hopefully we get to the how throughout the process. This isn't a short process. This is probably about a year is my guess as we go through that, so.
One thing, if I, if I forget, I would like to know kind of their timeline as far as other jobs, like do they usually run behind? If I forget to ask that question, just remind me.
As far as the firms?
Yeah, just like, yeah.
That's one of the big ones is what have they taken on? How much of the caseload do they have? And do they, are we a priority?
Yeah.
So that's my big concern as we get to that selection piece. Yep. Okay, cool. All right.
All right. Now moving on, sorry. Agenda item H is this A. Mrs. Scherzinger, we have public participation.
We do, yes.
Okay, so going to read a little thing about those who have signed up for public participation. Each person addressing the board will give his or her name and address. If several people wish to speak, each person will be allotted two minutes until the total time of 30 minutes is used. During that period, no person may be speak twice until all who desire to speak have had the opportunity to do so. Persons desiring more time should follow the procedure of the board to place on the regular agenda. The period of public participation may be extended by a vote by a majority of the Board of Education. As a board, we listen and take notes. All subject matters that require follow-up, someone from the board or administration will follow up on the outcome of what you shared today. First.
My name is Bryn Gadeo and I'm a senior at Goshen High School. This past season I had the privilege to be a captain of the varsity volleyball team alongside Macy Steele. Some of you may not know our head coach this past season, Amy Schbemar Bryant. Coach Bryant has coached the past 10 years here at Goshen High School. Recently, Coach Bryant resigned as head coach for family reasons. Macy and me are here to speak on her behalf. Coach Bryant was on the forefront creating the youth program. She started coaching me when I was in fifth grade in the Goshen volleyball youth program. Throughout these last seven years, I have experienced how outstanding of a coach, Coach Bryant is. She is more than just a coach. She is a mentor and a role model to all of her players. Her dedication to this program has made a lasting impact on not only Goshen volleyball, but individual lives. She teaches her athletes the value of hard work and believing in themselves. In the past 10 years, she has impacted so many lives in positive ways. She cares about our mental and physical health. When I had a bad game or a bad practice, I could always count on a text from Amy to make it better. That is the kind of person she is. I am forever grateful for her dedication to this program. I was very saddened when I heard that Amy was resigning, but I hope for the program that Anna Booker, our assistant coach, continues coaching. This program has grown so much in a little amount of time. I, I've been a part of it and I can't wait to see how far it goes for the years to come. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, my name is Macy Steele and I am a sophomore here at Goshen High School. As Bryn said, I also had the privilege to be a captain alongside her for the varsity volleyball team. I have been a part of varsity volleyball team for the past two years and that was led by coaches Amy Bryant and Anna Booker. I'm here tonight to speak about the positive role these coaches have played in my life. Both coaches have shown me how coaches should treat their players. Coach Anna and Coach Amy have instilled confidence in me as a person and a player. In addition, they have shown compassion both on and off the court towards each and every girl. They always have the team's back no matter what and cared about our health, both physically and mentally. Coming in freshman year was very stressful and also came with a lot of pressure. Coach Anna and Coach Amy always made sure I was mentally ready. Also, I can tell you from experience that there is very few coaches that will prepare you as much mentally as they do physically. Sometimes it was them texting me after a rough game to tell me they were proud of me and that I did good. Sometimes it was Anna screaming how we are dogs in the huddle. That's a good thing. And also making, they're reinforcing their belief in us in tough situations. They knew when to be harsh, but also when to pull us back and talk us through the situation. Personally, I feel that not just by myself, but the team will be negatively impacted by the loss of Coach Amy Bryant due to her resignation. I surely hope at the very least, our team will be able to continue to build and move forward with Coach Anna. Our program will be profoundly impacted if we do not move forward with at least one of these coaches. Our upcoming seniors will have to start from ground zero if we are given an entirely new coaching staff and they do not deserve that. As an athlete who plays three sports and three travel sports, I have had quite a few coaches over the years. And by far, these two coaches have been some of the best. I always look forward to volleyball season, not just because of my amazing teammates, but Coach Anna and Coach Amy play a big part in my love for the game. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your time tonight. Mr. Schenkel, moving on to new business B, treasures report.
I trust we moved it. All right. So we're basically a third of the way through of the year. And so our general fund, just going through this little summary here of that, our beginning balance of the, of the year, of course, is still $15 million. We brought in year to date, $16 million and spent $12 million. So our, like I was saying, like last month, we spent roughly $3 million a month. I mean, we're right on that track. And you can see our month to date for end of October is $19,289,000. So we're up $4 million this year. Percent of revenue received, and we've estimated we're bringing in about 41%. As you can see, they were a third of the year. It's hard to believe we already got four months in this fiscal year. So we're kind of cranking along. Our total revenue through October is to $60 million. We got budget at 39, so we still have 22 million yet to collect for the rest of the year. Year to date, if you could look at last year, we brought in $14 million at this time. This year we brought in $60 million, which is up over $2 million. On the right hand side, basically where's that money coming from? And I think everyone knows our real estate tax bill and the home state rollback of those first two columns, local resources. The rollback does is the biggest increase of where the revenue came from on that. The next one, this right here is our, what we get from the state, the state every month when we get our financial, when we get our dollars from, from the state. So on this, I'm just going to point right here, our total state support that we were getting, this is what they planned was $20 million. And on that, you can see the new funding formula that's coming through with our base costs and then our student wellness and success funds. So the 3100 ones are federal, are state dollars. The 3200s are all of our restrictive funds, so our DPIA and that sort of thing. The one that I really want to just kind of point out to is DPIA, where we went to free and produce lunch this year and was getting our CPE. What happened, this is prior to that, when they posted it, then we'll look at the next month and we'll show you, is that this is where our school lunch, all of our kids went and got right, put in is DPIA, the whole district. So before that, if you just kind of remember this number, 450,000, that was our number for DPIA, you can see that. So then in October 2, our new data went in. And as you can see, we were at 20, we're at now 21. So we're up about $900,000 this year. And the one that really took the hit, this is where right here, I mean, not a hit, but this is where we really got it. We had 454,000. We now got $2 million coming in on our CPE when we first went to that program. Now the difference, the only thing that really that kind of hit us here is like, if we went up 1.5 million on DPIA, why didn't our total go up? 900,000? Well, our new totals, our new numbers went in. So like on our base costs and all this stuff, the formula hit. And where we didn't take it, where we stopped taking open enrollment kids, that number went down.
So I just speak to that real quick. I mean, I think as a board in the retreat, a lot of our conversations was trying to balance it. And it's, I don't have a guess at all as we look at open enrollment. We accepted about 30, 40 less, had a few move out. So when you do that, with us being on the formula, every student is calculated into this formula, the less students, the less money we received in state aid. Fortunately, with the unknowing of DPIA, not knowing, we, we just went for that because we think it's the right thing to do. Making sure that we're feeding every kid that we can, two meals a day if possible. The DPIA piece of that, you know, the disadvantaged piece, I think that's going to be looked at from the state level because there were more schools that went on to this. So the more schools that go to CEP, the less, they're not going to continue to fund it that way. So that's kind of an unknown right now. We always say this is an unknown because it's got a lot of, you know, equations behind it. But, you know, had we not done DPIA and decreased that open enrollment, I, the enrollment's coming, we know that. It's trying to balance it so that we don't lose funds that we're using for Goshen kids today, moving forward. And it's a, it's a delicate balance. So all in all, we're okay. But, you know, there are, when we make decisions on this, there are good consequences and there are bad consequences on any of this. So we try to balance that and that's what we've done for years as far as open enrollment goes. We still have the unknown of year five and six. I think you guys heard that at Capitol Conference. We're not sure if they're going to fully fund it. That whole funding formula is based on increases in year five and six. So if we don't get that, this may look drastically different from the state, from the base cost moving forward. So it's one that continues to watch.
See up here, our base cost, I mean, that's the biggest number on that sheet. And like Mr. Bailey was saying, the DPIA was really just one pot of money. And then everyone started, you know, when they opened that up for your, you get, you know, your free lunch, more people got in there. So how that's going to be funded on down the road is really kind of an unknown at this time, but. Do you know if the DPIA is funded by federal dollars to the state or strictly from the state? If you have any idea? It's all, it's all state. Okay. And then with, as far as years five and six, we don't even know what that's going to look like.
We know what they said it was going to be. We don't know. It's in, it'll be in the biennial budget and they're working through a budget.
The state's bringing in less taxes this year.
The revenue's right now.
So are we thinking we're going to have a better picture of that budget in like February-ish?
I think, I mean, anytime you look at top five year forecast, I think, you know, there are projections in there that we're comfortable with. But when will we know the biennial budget?
Yeah.
Their guess is as good as mine.
They really had like into, to get it.
Totally.
And I don't know if you guys have, I mean.
The one year they didn't come out until June.
Correct. I mean, it was way, way late. So, yeah, and I think you guys have read, I mean, like, I have never seen somebody propose House bills, Senate bills coming down the pipe. I mean, like at Capitol Conference, like someone just kind of reviewed them like, kidding me? I mean, so there's a lot going on, you know, and that's really, it's huge for us on, you know, on what, on what happens there with our.
That's one of my questions about enrollment. Is there a way that we can partner with the, like new subdivisions so that a family can receive some kind of survey or a buyer can receive some kind of survey so that we can begin to estimate, like, there's, there's kids who will be school age at this point or this family has school age kids right away, right? So we can begin to estimate that growth from the new housing developments versus how many kids we should. So we can begin to estimate that growth from the new housing developments versus how many kids we should maybe consider for open enrollment?
My hope is, is that part of this RFQ with the term that we go with has a demographic study that helps us with that. Not just looking at birth rates in Claremont County, but demographically in those neighborhoods, I'm going to assume they have a way. Todd and I have gone out and talked to each model home to try to understand, but obviously there are things they can tell us and things they can't.
Right.
The typical drive-through in neighborhoods with all the little tyke stuff tells you there are kids in there that aren't hitting us yet, but, you know. Yes, I mean, if you remember pieces of that too, folks are current students buying into those subdivisions, selling their old house. So then you get who's buying the old house, just a lot of pieces that go into that. So hopefully through the RFQ and through that demographic study, whoever we select, they have it done. That's a big pivot. That question is, demographically, how do you work with a growing school district to have numbers that we can work from? I mean, currently, right now, what I have building principals doing, and it's Todd and Teresa and I have worked with them, it's start to plan for next year for a three percent increase in your population. And if we go over that, you know, but that's us trying to plan from a staffing standpoint, working with the busing standpoint. So it's just to have a little bit of, you know, what is it? I mean, this year, we were a little flat. Not to say that, you know, we're having move-ins throughout the year, so that number is going down a little bit. But I still, I wish I had that crystal ball and to tell you, all I can tell you is from past experience in a former district, when it happens, it happens. And that number is generally pretty spot-on that they give you from a demographic study.
You do make sense.
To be fair, it may be the board too, if they want it, just an open enrollment snapshot too. Can you send me that last year compared to this year?
Number of kids, maybe you have some families that were previously open enrollment that moved. And we went to DR, that was like their big, I mean, this has been a while, and that was like their biggest client, was open enrollment kids finding a place. And that's where they kind of got their start back there, so.
And then obviously, as we're planning for that, we're planning for that big eighth grade class coming into the high school.
Yeah, I think we're going to, I think, yes, Stephanie's working through that. I think we've been proactive enough that. Okay, for right now, I'm assuming that class doesn't grow more. Generally, as folks move in, it's generally at the high school year. So it's up to see how that goes.
Okay, so, and if you look, I mean, on the five-year forecast, that's the number, I put that on there, just to get that rolling. These numbers here are going to be updated, I think, on this next with our EBS, which is preschool, special ed. Because that number did change to our prior one, so. Does anyone else have any questions on that? I mean, I know it's a lot, this is right off of our foundations sheet and then, like, I didn't even put the expenditures on there just so you could see the revenue. Because we do take out our SDRS and that sort of thing on that as well. So, but if you've got questions on that, you can holler at me. So the last little bit here is that on our budget, we spent about thirty-one percent and months completed. I mean, that's basically our, our third twelve million dollars is spent there and we've got another twenty-six million, so. So our year-to-date, the first, this old graph over here basically shows what we brought in for fifth year, twenty-four was eleven million. To date, we brought in twelve million, which is up five percent. So those, out of those expenditures, I mean, five hundred fifty, about a half million dollars over the four months. You can see salaries and benefits, which is basically our, you know, step up for our employees. Our purchase services was a lot of our projects that we did, sent the alarm and that sort of thing, where we had that coming out of there. And then our other, just miscellaneous supplies and that sort of stuff. That's where we're at for a half million. And then budgeted, right now, the fund balance is projected to be almost sixteen million dollars. But what we're trending on the numbers, what it's showing, and I mean, really, it's kind of like predicting the weather. You know, the closer it gets, we start learning numbers, what the state's going to do with our budget, we can start nailing that down a little bit. But they're, what they're trending since we're up so much money, it's saying we're going to have almost eighteen million dollars. So it's a lot higher. I'd hate to go out there and say that's what we're going to get until we really know for sure. So I'll be happy if that is the case, of course. So the next one, really just, everything's pretty normal. We do have like our MCore where we're updating all of our HVAC stuff and sent the alarm where we got all the, you know, the Q cards and, or it in and out. So that's about it. Any questions on anything?
Any additional questions?
Are those broken down, those payments in any specific way, or is it a lump sum payment? Or do we pay certain, like, are we going to see a big lump sum pay for like MCore and those projects?
Oh, we, it's almost like draws. I mean, they'll get so much work done and we'll, we'll pay more, but it's kind of, we make sure we don't pay anything upfront and you're watching it take off.
Not a big chunk at one time, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, but it is still, they're pretty big chunks when they make a do-bill, so it's a big project.
Any others? All right, moving on, new business eight, C, financials, one through six. Do we have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. Schinkel, can you please call the roll?
This is working?
Yes.
This is Pep Rocky?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
This is Gray?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Moving on, eight, new business B, personnel, one and two. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
I just want to thank Chuck Smith. He's on there. After a lot of conversations, December thirty-first, it's.
Beers thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine years in the district. He knows everything, a little bit of everything, where everything's at. We will continue to use him. He's talked about maybe Melon in the summer for sure, but he's ready to retire.
So that he can be on the bowling team still?
Yes.
So he's available. Phone a friend if we can't find something, that's cool.
Mrs. Walker, she's what?
Mrs. Walker is a teacher at the middle school that is replying.
What, what?
Intervention.
Replaced your plan two? Okay.
Any other discussion? Mr. Schinkel, can you please call the roll?
This is Pep Rocky?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Yes. Moving on, new business E, athletic personnel, one and two. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
How many lifting supervisors do we have? So that is, what we have was, we had a stipend left from working with, so that, that would be three. So I was really maintaining the weight room and some speed and agility stuff outside the weight room when we talk about it from that standpoint. But it was a leftover stipend that we did not use, that we, again, with that side of it, reallocated, for lack of better terms, for the season. They've got a lot more kids out. Just trying to manage all that.
Kids are coming out for it.
Absolutely.
Yes. Any further discussion? Mr. Schinkel, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Rare?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. West?
I will abstain.
This is working?
Yes.
This is Pep Rocky?
Yes.
New business F, miscellaneous, one. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion, I'd like to thank the Goshen Athletic Boosters for their donation towards football, volleyball, basketball, and the weight room. And EBS, thank you for the continued support from Love Line Express.
Great.
Mr. Schinkel, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Just to be safe, I'll abstain because it has to do with athletics, so.
This is working?
Yes.
This is Pep Rocky?
Yes.
Mr. Rare?
Yes.
Moving on, new business G, policies, first readings, we had twenty-two policies we are considering for updates and additions. If you guys can see the first readings, I think we have a packet right here.
A little light reading.
A little light reading. Lisa Corey is our policy committee representative. Do you have anything you want to provide? Summary.
It's a beautiful meeting on Friday. Got a very good meeting. We had OSBA here to, to kind of go through our existing policies, to update them, go through them, update them if they needed, add if they needed, change if we, you know, kind of need to put different verbiage in there just to, one, make sure we're protected and two, we're clear. So we're not done, still.
A lot of Fridays left.
We've got five Fridays left.
Yeah, but these were, these were the October PBQ. So that was the one thing in talking to OSBA, and I hope Lisa and Corey can second. I mean, we've kept up, and there is work that we have to do, but we've kept up with a lot of policy updates. This is part of that. So there's two pages that we sat down with the committee and went through. Some of them language changes, some of them changes because of law. I would suspect that after we get through this, actually, while we're going through this rewrite, we'll probably be updating policies as the legislature does some things too, so it's a good time to be doing it.
Those are because of law changes.
Yes.
The majority of them took effect October twenty-fourth, I think, and then the rest of them was like the very beginning.
Yes, which we have worked hard with the right staff to make sure that we're compliant with law as we catch our policy. So December meeting, we will have a motion to approve these, discussion if we need to have any. But we're also, I think there were two or three of these, like Teresa said, that we got through at the policy review last Friday. Three hours went faster than I thought.
It did.
It did. Well, it was, it was three hours, but it went faster than I thought. It's good to look at those and touch and feel them a little bit if you don't deal with them a ton and it's good practice, so I'm glad we're doing it.
And I know this Friday, we're covering some audit and finance and unfortunately, I can't be there because I can jump practice, but.
I can be there.
Thanks.
Some others will be there. In the GHS community room.
Our consultant will be virtual. The idea of that is, this is a public meetings, or a public meeting under Open Meetings Act. So we will try to have a majority of the committee here. There will be, our consultant will be zooming in, anybody on the committee that wishes to can, but we've got to have a majority here.
And we'll be voting on these new policies next month.
Correct.
So moving on to new business H, Board of Education reports for board committee roles and liaison chips. I just want to start out by sharing that the entire Board of Education, a lot of our leadership team, took a time away from families and I know personal time from jobs to attend the Ohio School Board Conference last week. I think we all came away with some good tidbits and takeaways from the conference. We plan to do a little write-up of the different sessions that we attended, so look for that to come out here soon. But if you want to go ahead and share any kind of updates or anything that you'd like. Melissa, you want to start with you?
Sure. So part of the Capitol Conference is the Student Achievement Fair. And so we had some middle school students there from Tyler Downey's class representing career readiness, and so they did a great job. So that was fabulous. And then just interesting, I get a update on student achievement in an email. And it was very funny because one of the strategies that I would like to pass on is about mixing engagement strategies and shifting between direct instruction and collaboration. I mean, it was just exactly what this STEAM classroom was talking about. So talking about you should only talk, the teacher should only instruct for three to six minutes and then let the kids talk about it. And I thought, oh my gosh, that's exactly what is happening in this STEAM classroom. So we ought to just be writing the Student Achievement Newsletter instead of letting all of these other.
We call that I do, we do, you do.
Yeah, exactly. So we ought to just upload this, I think, because that's amazing. So, yeah, fantastic. And, yeah, a lot of great sessions, so I will do my little write-up. A lot of sessions that I went to were about community engagement, so that will be really relevant as we embark on our new adventures. So, yeah.
Thanks, Melissa. Bill?
Well, yeah, a lot of great sessions. Seems like, seems like it's over like that, so we haven't enough time to, you know, so we, we're conflicted. Matter of fact, first session Corey and I went to, it was a two-hour session. We can only sit through an hour of it because we wanted to go to a different session. You know, and then each block, it seems like there are two or three things, it's like, which one, which one to go to? I mean, that was a lot to learn, very interesting. But yeah, I'll tell you something else, so on Southwest Executive Board also, I had to sit man that booth up there for a while. And people from the southeast booth weren't, there was nobody at their booth, so there were some board members from a school in southeast Ohio that come over and asked me some questions, some issues they're having in their school district. And how we handle it, and it was like, I mean, things just, it's like here, I mean, they, I mean, it seemed like they really know too much, like, it was online with like student achievement and all the different buildings. They're like, how do you communicate with your buildings and how, like, well, you have a different building come in, you know? It's just, there's, there's, there's things that just, no communication blocks there, their board, their admin team, or the principals of the buildings that just have no, I mean, it's really, it blew my mind. You know, it's like, we've got a, we've got a great team here in Goshen, really appreciate what we have. Because they, they struggle, they struggle with attendance issues and disciplinary issues. If they're not even communicating amongst themselves, you know, how can they address the problem? It's really, really tough. But move on to Great Oaks. We have applications for, the Oaks is open now. I think it opened up on the fourteenth, I believe, or fourteen, for those kids interested in attending the Oaks. This week, we had our three different meetings on Wednesday night, starting at five o'clock. We had our finance and audit meeting, or the, goes over the five, our five-year forecast and everything. And we had a regular committee meeting center, or building and assets committee, which we're looking at doing some work at a major project in Scarlet Oaks. Because it's, it's showing its age and also some more, smaller projects at Live Oaks. You know, we've got new entrance and everything, it really looks, we do operate on the side of the building, in the back of the building, you know, it's, you know. Yeah, they need to, so we're going to do some wraps on, on the back of it and stuff. When I say wrap, like, not like a car, like, yeah, yeah, just like the saw thing, that it's going to really make it a little more modern. And that's, oh, I'm going to, I'm going to forecast to you guys, the, forecast forward to you guys, the spotlight on students.
Okay.
Because they're, they, they send that to us in a PDF format now. So I'm going to send that to each one of you guys. We had a lot of Goshen kids there. We have a few kids, a couple of kids from Laurel Loxton this month and several kids from Live Oaks. And the, which we're talking, probably be in it next month, the ROTC program, the, the ladies ROTC program. At Live Oaks, that first place, I believe, again, you know, last year they did, I think, the men and the ladies teams did it. But they had dozen, I think a dozen of her awarded scholarships in a college they went to. And, yeah, Ohio with four years paid for, which is amazing. It has an ROTC program. So that'll be more information next month. You got it, I think, just like, so that's not in the spotlight on students. And I think we have a couple of ladies in Goshen that are in that.
I just wrote down on asterisks to ask Carrie to send that to me. I don't get it. So if you're forwarding it, great. If not, I want to get that.
Yeah, so it's not in this month's spotlight on students, but I'm sure it'll be in next month's. The date's always there in the meeting the other nights. That's all I have.
Thank you, Bill. Lisa?
So on the legislative front, the Senate and the House are both back in session. So I'm sure we will be hearing more from them in the coming months. I do know that one bill, Senate Bill one oh four, which is the Ohio College Credit Plus Bill, has been forwarded to the governor for signature, sent at the end of last week, if I'm correct. So that's moving to his desk for signature. It, it did get a bit amended to include transgender bathrooms along with it. But it's heading to, heading to the governor. So and on the Capitol Conference front, I love policies, so I went to the policies updates. And I do have to say, we, we really are ahead of the curve based on what they were saying in, in those sessions as well. There was quite a lot that they were suggesting advising school districts, take a look at and look at updating. And we had already covered it and they're in this packet for our first reading and everything. So we are, we are on the ball here in Goshen. So and then I also went to community engagement sessions and that in preparation for our RFQ and such. Thank you. Sure. Cory?
It was good. Enjoyed my time. It slowed down a little bit just because it was my second time going. So it wasn't like, it's the first time was just really fast and a lot to take in. But you know, like you said, it's, it's difficult because there's so many that you want to get to, but they're at the same time. So but my focus really was on some of the Title IX stuff, some of the policies met, you know, with the building teams and whatnot for, for those conferences. Just because I'm still, still new about it, I went to some board meeting trainings as far as like how boards, you know, run or how a meeting should run, which was pretty cool. We're doing a lot of that stuff already anyways, but it's good to, to see that. So yeah, I slowed down a little bit. It was a little better, kind of knew where I was going, what I was doing. It was pretty good, so.
Anything from the township?
Nope.
So for me, audit and finance, we of course don't have a meeting until January. And then our Goshen Education Foundation meeting is tomorrow night. So I'll have an update next month. And from a conference perspective, I also attended a lot on just board membership and leadership. My first year as a board president, so I attended some sessions on that, which were extremely helpful. I agree with all of you that we're definitely, some of the things that you always walk away with is we're one of the only boards where the entire board attends, which is exceptional. So thank you all for your commitment to lead in that way. And then also just like the collaboration from our administrative team, our board, our school district in general. Some of the school district board members talked about how they don't even necessarily see a lot of what the kids are doing from day to day or even extracurriculars. And that kind of blows my mind just because the type of school district we are. I feel like our community is that way, right? And involved in at a higher level. So that's always exciting to hear, but definitely took away some good things that I'll be putting in my write-up that I'm excited about. And on a little bit of a side note, a kind of connection, my part, you know, is near and dear to the Snack Pack Foundation. And we had a gala on Saturday and we were able to raise a lot of funds. So my guess is see some, expect some things to come from Snack Pack in the coming months. And as you know, the mission to raise awareness, support and educate in the area of mental health and suicide prevention for teens and young adults. So our high school area kids are definitely, you know, an area that we concentrate on, but definitely anyone in the community really. So anticipate some partnerships to come in the future is my guess. So that's my board report. Any questions about anybody's board reports?
One thing they had, the people that I talked to that probably, I think it was from the county school.
Oh, yeah.
Like, can you imagine being a county?
Yeah, a board from the whole county.
Right. Yeah, we have a community here, but that county is just like, I mean, how would they?
Be all Claremont County.
Yeah, that would be, that's tough.
Seems amazing to hear, like one session I went to had, the school district was 2.6 miles. And then one, it was like 80 miles, you know? It's like, oh my gosh, it's such a, you know, some are, you know, rich and some are poor. And it's just like such a, guys, that's just.
The one that just threw in their operating levy along with that bond issue, just, just because of the past. Yeah, it is quite interesting when you go, you go to a session and you're like, you want to get something out of it. You're like, this school is nothing like ours, right? Like or what they're sharing. But I didn't have any of those this year, so.
We have the Red Path one up there by Red Path, the school that's in the 2.6 mile. Yeah, and they just, you know, everything just goes so smooth. They passed everything, no problem.
Like they print their own money.
Any other, any questions?
I just same thing as you echoed there. It's, it's nice for all of you guys to go up. I know it is time away. And I think the one thing that we learned is public education in the state of Ohio is strong. There's a lot of successes. Doesn't come without challenges, but our, our teachers in all of Ohio, our administrators in Ohio are doing some great things for kids, no matter what, you know, no matter what some of the obstacles are. So it's good to see that. It's good to learn. I always say networking, as I talk to our building principals, finding a network. We don't have it all. We don't know it all. We can share some things and we can learn from others. So that's a good time to go up and do that. So I do appreciate you guys taking time to do that.
Do, do we know if there's a House bill for public money going to, isn't, isn't there something out there for public money going to?
Well, there were, yeah, I mean, it's one of the, it's one of the Senate bills, I believe, talking about dollars to go to parochials to expand buildings without them. Now, where that falls in and what it is, I think we're going to know more about the numbers. And I'll, I'll work with Lisa here because I get an update.
Okay.
Monthly weekly now.
I'll just see those emails going and just, they just keep taking more.
You know, in Kentucky, it was voted down.
Yeah, that's why.
And there was a kid that goes to a Catholic school that wrote a letter to the newspaper asking people to vote it down. And it was kind of, and he said he would love it in his newspaper in the school. He, they said that they, he's thinking about kids in the further out, rural parts of the state where they don't have really any choice of the other schools to go to. So that money, money would be coming from those schools, public schools, going to the private schools in populated areas. So he's looking out for other kids at the state.
And 90% of the kids.
The kid who was raised in private schools. He's like, hey, both money should not be going to, because it's coming from these.
I think one of the things that I will continue to advocate on your behalf and tell me if I shouldn't. It's about the fair funding of schools. It's about probably a little bit of deregulation of some of the things that were regulated to do, that others taking public dollars or not. So that, you know, I don't think we're stopping school choice that's, that's out there. And unless it's put on for a vote, it's not going to be stopped. But I think we need to do it fairly across the board.
And more accountability.
Expect, either expect, I'm, I'm all for accountability and, you know, having that piece. But there are spots that get that and don't have the accountability from an auditing standpoint, whatever it may be. So that's, uh, not all.
Yeah, I think there's one accountability is what they, I saw that they're trying to supply the pushing for that.
Right. All we can do is advocate and make sure that we're talking to our legislators.
Yeah, they want accountability for attendance, behavior, testing standards.
Where the money's going.
And also financial. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, moving on, new business. Superintendent Report?
So I am going to, I'm not going to go over this. But I felt like, just giving you a quick, and I'm going to, I'm going to preface this with, one of my goals is to continue to develop and implement a plan to close the achievement gap, meet state report card requirements and foster readiness for all students. What I've put together for you is kind of a November highlight of our target areas. This is really October highlight up until now. Of all the things that are going on and high quality instruction, early literacy, college and career readiness, technology education, communication and student development. And then just a few others that probably fit many category. I don't want to read those for you. I'll trust that you can go home and put yourself to sleep with. And actually, some of it's very exciting and it's fun to read and hear. But I do just want to cover tonight, high quality instruction with that goal of developing a plan. You know, when we talk about high quality instruction, it's talking about refining interventions, formative instructional practice, student ownership of learning, promote innovation, and then provide a regular, rigorous and diverse curriculum. So when I say this to you guys that, you know, I always try to put a picture with it so that you can just simplify it. So what a lot of our staff, principals, PLCs, grade level meetings, you name it. What we're really talking about is we have indicators that we're teaching and that we're ultimately assessed on. So our teachers are really working hard on the indicators that we're teaching, the pacing guide, how fast we're getting through it, when we need to be doing it, to the how, which is how are we instructing? Whether it be lesson, how to goji, how are we doing from the STEAM piece that she talked about? And then once we've got this, we assess. We assess a couple of times a year through state software and then also curriculum or through common assessments that we have built in. So when I say that to you guys, this whole thing is a clock. It just keeps working. Look at the standards that are coming up, talk about the lessons, how are we teaching it? We assess it and then we figure out after we assess, what do we need to do? Whether that's enrich or that's intervene. So that's the, that's the cycle that just our staff goes through, whether it's, you know, diving into the data that we've been doing the past month with our value-added results that came in to all the way down to the elementary, looking at how we get through tier one, tier two, tier three interventions, where kids need to be through assessment data. So looking at that big picture, our principals have been really diving in, working with department chairs on PLCs that focus on the restart readiness. So we give restart readiness in any tested subject two times a year. It's kind of a beginning and an end before we assess through the states so that we know where our gaps are at and how we intervene. In between that, there's field authored assessments, there's common assessments. And these are really teacher-based, teacher-driven within the classroom. And then from that, they take the next steps and they tutor small group, provide intervention, provide enrichment based on that. We are fortunate that our teachers have our GLSD Ohio State data tool that Mark created. Because it really puts targets out there for each of our teachers to see where a kid should be landing by the end of the year and then trying to get them there. Math behind it, trust me, it's probably similar to the state budget, how you get there. But it really does give our teachers an idea of where a kid starts and where they should end based on a yearly assessment. So they're able to have some targets and goals with those kids. We reviewed that in our PD in November at each of the buildings, met with our district leadership team, made sure our leaders had a good idea of how that tool works. Mark went around and presented at each building so that they understood how to use that data at the teacher level to then drill down into their lessons and how they can intervene, small group, whatever it might be within the classroom. And then another big piece of that is just that staff training and orientation. As we get new teachers, we've got to onboard them correctly. We've got our RESA, you know, process, our resident educator where they're teamed up with mentors. They've got whether it be grade level, whether it be department, they're learning from the best and that is our current staff. So we really have to onboard and make sure they're up to date. But you know, through this whole process, sometimes I try to just simplify it for myself because I don't dive as deep sometimes in the curriculum. I do, but I've got Teresa, Danielle, Kelsey and building principals. But for you guys from a board, that's really, call it what you want to call it. It's a circle throughout the year that just continues. And we're making sure at the end, our kids for a state test or for an ACT test or for whatever it is, it's just another day and they're prepared for it. So again, a big update on all of those, there's a lot more in high quality instruction than this, but this has kind of been our driving focus through the month of October. And November is making sure we know where the kids' targets at, how we need to pace our instruction, what assessments are we using? And then what are we doing after we assess? How are we growing kids daily? Okay? Questions on that before I jump to my other two or three? I promise I'm almost done. Holiday luncheon, just mark it on your calendar, Monday, December 16th. We will be heading back to Weiss Baking Company for that, for our luncheon. And that's a lot of times we're bringing retirees back in and some of our essential staff here, just to celebrate a little bit. And then mark the calendar as well. We have our 2025 high school graduation date, Thursday, May 22nd. We are back at NKU. It's a great venue for us. I think it's mostly easy for parents to get to and it holds. So we are working on next year's date right now, which looks to be a little, we got to get a calendar set first, but it might be a little different because of the way the calendar falls before working through that. And then lastly, just to, I put this in an email to you guys, but I just want to bring it to everybody's attention. We submitted a Bureau of Workmen's Comp grant back in October, found out that we received that $40,000 grant. The grant will purchase roughly 235 staff badges and Bluetooth connections that will allow us to incorporate a a silent alarm, call it, however you want to call it, with our current Informicast system. So a majority of our staff will have these. I did see that Governor Dewan was looking at doing some type of grant currently through Alyssa's Law or something, where they're maybe doing this. So we'll just go for the rest of the staff. When that one comes out. But I do feel like it adds another layer to our continued efforts of school safety. We will have the infrastructure put in over Christmas break and then need to train staff, obviously, on how this fits into our, our current safety system. But just continue to add layers. We also submitted, and I thought Friday I got a response, I thought it was we got it approved, but it's at the Pending Review Committee with the Bureau of Workmen's Comp for another $40,000 grant. That would upgrade some of our snow removal equipment for our maintenance staff. Obviously that with Bureau of Workmen's Comp is a little bit more of the less slips, trips, falls. So we have a piece of equipment and a bunch of implements that hopefully will help make life a little easier, not just snow season, but also through mowing and mulching and airing baseball fields, you name it. So it came with a lot of implements on it. So hopefully we'll get that. You don't know unless you ask. If they say no, you go back and try to get something else. But our, our consultant liaison did say it looked like a pretty good submission. So thanks to Todd and Troy and Teresa for helping word smith it right the right way. But we'll continue to find dollars if we can find them. So if we get both of those, that's about 80,000 that is saved out of the general fund and taxpayer dollars to do the right things. And then lastly, in December, hopefully I will bring, be bringing you a new athletic trainer partnership agreement with St. Saint Children's Hospital. We are at the, they're going to come out and meet with us on December 6th. I want to sit down with them and our AD staff, the trainer, a couple of our coaches to go through that agreement to understand what the expectations are from us and them so that we can dive into this. My goal would be to bring that to you guys. Currently, the agreement is with our legal counsel and it is with their legal counsel. So we're just making sure ink's dry before I bring it to you guys to approve it. But I am excited about that. I think if you say St. Saint Children's to a parent of an athlete or any student, it's a very trusted name in this area. And I think it'll be a, a great addition to our district and to our student athletes, coaches.
And ours was ending, right? We needed something, right?
Ours was, yeah, ending's a nice word, yeah. They pulled, our current trainer pulled out on us to provide their trainer. It's, there's a lack of athletic trainers.
The company not to necessarily like athletic trainers.
Correct.
That was multiple districts that they pulled out.
So it left us searching, but I, in the end, I think it's going to be a great partnership. So I'm very excited about it.
They partner with any interest.
What is it? Is it Fayetteville, Harry? And then St. Saint Public Schools. We're like number six schools. We're hoping to grow that part of their business. So.
Yeah, so I actually, as you know, my daughter's going through PT right now and so I mentioned this.
You get a frequent, you get a frequent.
I do. I, St. Saint Children's loves, St. Saint Children's loves the great family. But I actually mentioned this to her at physical therapy late last week. And she, in her words, like, oh, I shouldn't say this, but St. Saint Children's a few years ago kind of dropped the ball at jumping on this and moving in this direction. a few years ago kind of dropped the ball at jumping on this and moving in this direction. And so she was really excited to hear that overall, as a company, they are considering supporting local school districts and, and getting on board with this type of support.
I do, I mean, I'm, the part that I'm excited about too is right over, what's the place off of 275 that just kept growing?
TQL.
They died, TQL, they're adding a facility there. Children's is adding a facility.
And we go to Mason, which is.
Close to home, which is close.
Yeah.
Yes.
Is there a cost to those programs? Are they going to do it like?
For the contract that we're going to go into, there will be a cost for this.
Is there a current cost for what we have now?
No. It's a paid model versus a referral model. And the referral model is kind of where.
The referral model is dying.
Correct, yeah.
That's why they're pulling out.
I think when I started and when I was at AD, years ago, we were paying. And it's come full circle at this point. But I do think it's a wise investment.
Yeah, I just think from a parent's standpoint, when you see your child go down, you don't have someone.
If you don't have a trainer, I'd be very nervous.
Different, different ballgame, right?
Yep.
Any other questions?
I think we need to keep them out. Herb afraid ads for electric fly swatters.
I know, I saw that.
Next time that they.
I migrate to herbal was talking.
I know, if anybody's watching, they're probably like, what are we doing? We're not hitting each other, we're hitting the flies.
They must love this room.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Sheen, can you please call the roll?
Mr. West?
Yes.
This is working?
Yes.
This is pet rocky?
Yes.
Mr. Rera?
Yes.
Yes. Meeting adjourned at 7:58.